I started it just in that way because I just learned the latter one now. It is.
We are live. So now we're live.
But there are some things I noticed about boys, I can feel it, but they have this.
It breaks without question.
The girls do have to be gone. I mean, most of them have all that kind of stuff. But then the boys would get, I mean.
And she gets her year under forty quickness. That was always kind of even.
Well, I saw one time where I was upset because my daughter was doing, she was younger, she was doing double or whatever. So she's like, he's a girl and now he's like, girl, 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 wants to be, you know, uh, star, get ready all the time.
I think we're too gray. I like.
Yeah, I thought.
Very funny.
Yeah, we always talk about.
Especially this one. Thank you, thank you. Good, good.
I know. I feel like.
You're wet, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
It's cold.
Eat it forward.
We'll call the special town meeting to order for December seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. We'll take a couple, let's take a few minutes for silence, please. Thank you. Denise, please send the flag, please. Denise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Good afternoon. Shane Davis.
Here.
Robert Jones.
I'm here.
Steve Denny.
Here.
Marissa Skaggs.
Here.
Chip Bab.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go on business. Order twenty-one dash thirty-one salary ordinance for twenty twenty-two. Everybody's sitting out there knows that we've met on this. Council discussion. Steve?
Yeah. The, before I talk about a few things, I just wanted to, I wanted to reach out to the park board president again and just ask there. Talking to you guys and talking to our town attorney, I still believe there is a lot of gray area in all this. I really do. And I'm asking, this will be my third time asking, if we could pass the budget as it is. All park board member, all park employees get five percent and then we have a whole year to work out this gray matter. That's what I, that's what I'm asking.
You can go ahead and answer.
I know the answer you want from me.
I, I, and I know it's not, I, I've just, I wanted to try again.
And I understand that. Mr. Graham was kind enough to come to my office yesterday and speak to me and all day of sudden. I have kind of the same mindset as you in that I told Jeff, I said, why is being proposed is something that has not been proposed in the forty-seven years of the existence of the park board that we're aware of? And if it's a gray area, then why change it now? If it's a gray area, pull the park out of the salary ordinance and do exactly what you said. Give us nine months before the budget's due to sort out. If it's a gray area, sort that out. Then my, my request is that you do, you're doing exactly what you said, so pull the park out rather than change what's been consistent for, as far as I know, forty-seven years of the park not being included in the salary ordinance. Leave it out this year and then let's, if it's a gray area, let's sort it out before budget time.
The only thing.
It's a long way of saying.
Okay.
The only.
Go ahead, wait with Steve, let Steve talk.
Um, well, if she has a comment to that, then.
Well, the only thing I was gonna say is you want to rely on the budget, but the budget we received this year wasn't accurate and forthcoming. And that is the part that doesn't sit well with me personally is that this budget, this gateway budget that was presented to us to vote on the same night that your golf pro said he wasn't being renewed, was not accurate. And you had time to revise it and you didn't. And so when you say, well, let's wait until the budget, well, that didn't work real, real well for us this year as far as all of us being on the same page.
Right.
And that's, that's the problem I have with the argument of, let's wait until the budget next year because it didn't work this year.
We've had this conversation.
Yes, I know.
Your opinion and certainly, I mean, I'll speak for the entire park board and certainly for here. There was never an amended ten. I, I know that that's been implied, that there was some nefarious, and I know the timing looks bad, that sort of thing. What I wish we would have done, I'm just kidding, I wish that we would have come back with an amended budget. We didn't.
Right.
That's on us. It wouldn't have changed the bottom line of the budget, I don't believe. But I do wish we would have done that just to avoid this, but I.
But now the stance you're kind of taking is that it's separate and so it doesn't really matter anyway. And so I guess I'm saying, if we're gonna wait till next year, what, what assurance do we have that it's gonna be different next year? If, if we just continue on down this path?
I don't, as far as I know, and I can't speak one hundred percent, but as far as I know, there's never been an issue with our budget. As long as I've been on the park board, I'm not aware of an issue. The issue you present, I don't disagree with the appearance of it.
Yeah.
But I've never noticed I have an issue with the budget and certainly with you, and I don't know what the title is, but I'll call you the liaison between the council and the park. Certainly we'll be working with you as we move toward our budget.
Okay.
So my point is, instead of jumping to change something that's never ever happened before, what's one more year of doing it the way it's always been done? And then we'll all try to do it better next year.
Okay.
If I'm correct, hasn't the park always followed the line of the rest of the town employees with raises and everything? Yes?
Yeah, I'm sure, I, I can't, again, I mean, I assume that's true.
Right.
I can't say, oh, absolutely, that's true, but.
Why are we changing that now then?
Let me, one question at a time, but I will say to you Shane is. I assume that we've done it historically to be consistent, but also what we've done, as I said at the last meeting, is a few years ago, during the course of the year, we created a position that had never existed before, funded it with, I think, just shy of fifty thousand dollars, whatever the number is, forty, whatever it is. Without any of this. I mean, without coming to the council and saying, hey, is it okay if we do this? We did it within our budget, our bottom line budget number. But if you're asking, you know, if we've generally tried to match three percent, five percent, I don't doubt that we have. But we do that again, just.
In this year, and, and now this year, you're wanting to change that and make it to where now you're saying, well, we've always done this in the past, but now we're not going to. So you've always done this in the past as a council, but now this year we don't want you to. It's the same, it's going both ways, sir. You're wanting us not to do something because, well, we've not done it in the past. You're doing the same thing. You've always followed the line of the town employees because the park department is town employees.
The one, the one thing, the significant change for this year, if we weren't, if we weren't doing what we did with the golf position and moving some things around, creating a full-time secretary position with benefits, if we weren't doing all of that, if it was just kind of status quo, I don't doubt at all that we would have just said, let's match the town on raises. But that's not the position the parks in, we're making some significant changes, which again, I said the other night, to me, the best, the focus has kind of ended up on Aaron and Donnie's raises. To me, the best thing that comes out of this is we end up with a full-time secretary with benefits.
I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad you said that about the full-time secretary because I listened to you guys' park board meeting. I was at a basketball game with my son and I was listening to it. You guys said you might not have that in the budget this year to have that. You told us as a council that you were gonna make that a full-time position. Told your park board, we don't know if we're gonna have that in the budget. Which one is it?
It's not, it's not in the ordinance.
Yeah, I didn't say that. I think what we talked about was at our next meeting, doing that, but I certainly didn't say it's not in the budget. I don't know, some, I'm not disagreeing if you listen, maybe somebody said that, but certainly it was not me who said that.
Yeah, they said that we don't know if we're gonna have the funds to make that a full-time position.
I'm not sure who said that. I, I do not doubt in you, but I'm not sure who said that, but I think we absolutely do from what we're doing with the, with the golf position. So again, it's a very long way of answering a simple question.
No, that's why I was just asking it because I was listening to you, I was like, I don't know if it was Aaron that said at the meeting or Brian's, because it's hard to hear on the Facebook Live. It's, it's horrible.
But if, if we weren't making this, and it's like, my best comparison of what we're doing now is what we did three, I think three years ago, maybe been four years ago at this point, when we, during the budget year, took Ron's position, split it into two positions, moved some money around, did a lot of things. That's what I would compare this to, is that kind of significant change within the park. Because it is a significant change. To your point, if we weren't doing that, if it was just kind of a status quo, I don't doubt that we would have just said, status quo and whatever the town's giving us raises, let's be consistent. We're doing something completely different than what the town is doing this time. And I, I don't doubt at all Shane that next year, I mean, I don't know that any significant changes are coming, but if they're not, I don't doubt at all that we'll do our best to just match what the town is doing. But that's kind of apples and oranges this year. You started asking something?
I, I forget what, now, but when you say, you know, what we're doing this year, it's apples and oranges. To me, in this position, it's not apples and oranges. We've got park employees, which are town employees, gonna get a ten, twelve, fifteen percent raise because the numbers don't jive up. And I said that the other night in the park board meeting, and they don't. They get that raise and you say, we'll talk about it. Well, that's big money. It's big money. This board and personally, we've got a whole town of employees that we try to take care of. And we go and give, because I've seen it happen. You go and give a raise like this that is not to the norm. It's gonna blow the town employees up.
And I, I don't know which raises you're talking about, if you're talking about Aaron or Donnie, if those.
I don't like dealing names. I'm talking about the parks.
Superintendent in Maynard.
Maynard's guy.
If those are the ones you're talking about, I would say, from everything I've looked at, we're getting those two positions comparable to surrounding parks and counties. That's, I mean, so I wouldn't say it's a raise that's completely out of line. A few years ago, when we created those positions, we put in the money we could at the time. I mean, that's just the truth. And if we could have paid them both more at the time or put more money into those positions, we certainly would have. We weren't in a position to do that. So for the last few years, since those two positions existed, they've been below comparable parks around us. And all of now is, and still with the superintendent position, it's still on the low end of comparable parks, but at least it's.
What parks? Because that's the list you give me, Brian, of the different towns? I looked at, the day you gave that to me, I just looked at it like a damn, I, I get home, I look this up. You're comparing this little town, small town Pendleton, great town. There's one park and one golf course. Noblesville has nine parks. Leblons got, I think, eight. Then the last one you give me, or one of them on there, the last one on the list, is for Danville, Illinois. I didn't even look it up. Because I, I don't, I don't compare us to the Westfield example, the Noblesville, the Zionsville. They mark comparisons to us. If that's true, this council would owe our police chief that's sitting back there about a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. And for the park superintendent, and I'm, I'm just gonna put it this way, I've said this, I'm, I'm gonna say it. A park superintendent is not getting the raise and make more money than the police chief or police captain. Not, not gonna happen. I said that to you.
I know you've said it before, and to me, that is apples and oranges because.
Well, not to me, for this town.
Okay. And part of, and I, I didn't bring all the papers in, so I can't go into this, but in the park's master plan, there are certain parks that are in our master plan that are comparable, and I don't, I can't give you the number off the top of my head, but those are ones we compare to also. So that's what I'm.
Okay. Okay.
I think.
Brian, where?
Comments?
Yeah, they're, good, I know. I have no doubt park board means well, and I hopefully you think that we mean walls as well on that. But I, you know, and Marissa's comment of some of the numbers, we do have some inconsistency on there with that. The, we are the responsible body for the, to the taxpayer on the expenditure funds through our corporate treasurer on that. And I get a little confused on that. I do like your discussion and our discussion as well as far as moving forward with what our decision is on this. But next year is, is, there is some gray area on this, as Steve commented on as well, and let's figure things out for next year. I think we need to get something done, done today, if you will, for lack of better words, on the budget. But it does throw me off a bit as far as one of Marissa's comments on the numbers. I think we have the numbers we're looking at through our corporate treasury, and I think we, in my view, we think we need to stick with the numbers on our interpretation. We want to work with the park board next year going forward. Some bumps in the road we need to figure out. You got a bond issue coming up that you, you're gonna be looking at as far as improvements in the park. We want to work with the park board on that. I think we need to get past this, but I'm a little bit hung up on the inconsistency in the numbers. I, I, I support our numbers where we are on this. I guess I think, I, I think we should probably go with that, go forward, figure things out for next year. We've got plenty of time to do that with the park board, to get bond issues moving forward, that discussion, park improvements, you guys have done a great job with that. The, but the, the numbers that does, I think, I think our numbers are correct and myself, I think that's, that's what I want to go with. And we want to work with you, with you good folks and moving forward.
Sure. And likewise, I want to get better all the time, so.
And, and we do too, yeah.
So if there's things that we need to improve or do differently, then let's do it.
I think we're on the same page on that, yeah.
Yeah. My, my position still is, why would you do something today that's not been done forty-seven years if it's a gray area? And there's a reason for the last five, and I presented them, I've shown them, the last five salary ordinances did not include the word park in there. And, and now this time, well, we're gonna include the park and set the park salaries to for the first time, so that.
Why, why do you think? Why is that wrong?
Why is what wrong?
Putting that in the salary ordinance.
I, I don't, and I know there's some disagreement, I don't think the law is gray at all.
Why, why do you think it's wrong to be in there as a town employee?
Because of the law.
Okay.
That's, I think the law is not.
I think it goes back to what Shane said and what Bob said, as us being on this council and the, the money's involved, whether it's salary, buying, whatever, the physical responsibility for us. If you're gonna, I shouldn't say you, if a position is deleted, okay? Because I don't like the word fire, okay? It's deleted. Then you take that money and split it between other employees. That's a problem with me. That, that's a problem. That's above and beyond the five, up to five percent. I know you don't agree, Brian, and, and that's fine, okay? It goes back to that text message you sent to me. I, I agree, okay? But what's right is right. I've seen this before, right here in this building. He talked about it in the meeting on Monday. And as the president of this, I'm not gonna let that happen again with the council's approval, okay? If they say yes, then I'll live with it, okay? That, that's the way it is. So.
Here's the other thing with the, the park tax levy that we've got. On the, the form we have that was submitted for this year, the park levy is four hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. The bonds that we owe are four hundred and eighty-two thousand and twenty-two dollars. So right now, we're right at it like a fifty-one thousand dollar in the hole. That's without anything. But like what you're saying, if the park board is not, or if the park employees are not employees of the town, where's the extra money come?
From money that we generate within the park.
The golf course and.
Building rentals, golf course, that's all our income.
I was just going off the tax levy. I was just going off of that. That's all I was going off of.
I, I just gave to someone from the town provider to Aaron, I think I passed out last time, it shows the park accounts and its property tax, and then money that we generate within the park is all our income. I'm gonna respond to something you said, and now I forget what it was.
That's good.
You asked me why I think that's wrong. I think the law is clear, but I also think there's a reason historically that the park has not been included in that, is because it's not part of it. I think the law is clear and I think, you know, for the last five years and beyond, the park is not included in your salary ordinance, and there's a reason for that. And that's.
That's the gray area that this guy just told.
I really do believe over the last fifty years, there was an understanding when the ordinance was signed back in the seventies, that the town and the park, when it was established, was gonna work together like this. I don't know why the park budget has not been in the salary ordinances. I think over time, it's become that gray area, and I for one don't like dealing in gray area. I, I, I want an answer. Either it's this way or it's that way. I think we have to run a town and, and boards that way. And I just don't want to deal, it needs to have a conclusion, it needs to have an answer, and that, that's the way I'm gonna vote today. The last thing I'm gonna say on this, and this is my own personal belief, feelings, is I feel that on the twenty-seventh of October, we were, we were presented with a budget from the park that included the golf pro's salary. And on that same day, the golf pro announced at the board meeting that he was not being retained. And I, I just feel like I, I was duped. I was presented a budget that wasn't real, that the park board or knew that he was gonna be, wasn't going to be retained. And for some reason, the town was not notified of that decision. We should have been. And, and, and I, I, that, it's my personal feeling, I feel like we weren't presented a valid, fair budget, knowing that that guy, that that position was going to be removed, and was on the exact same day that we approved the budget. And, and I have real concerns with that.
Sure. And I think Aaron said at the last meeting, or I lost track of meetings, but Aaron said at some point here, we submitted our budget the first week of September. but Aaron said at some point here, we submitted our budget the first week of September. So it wasn't, so we submitted it that night, but-
It's not in stone.
What I've said in this gag is, I regret that we didn't come back and say, hold up, we need to amend that. I, I do regret that, because I understand how it looks, but we had submitted our budget a month and a half prior to-
Well, that even makes me feel even more, because we've had, from September to October twenty-seventh, where somebody could have had a conversation.
Right. And that's what I mean. And that's, that's on us. I, I do wish-
It makes people, it makes me feel that it was deliberate. And I hate, I don't like feeling that way.
And I hate that you feel that way, because I, I'll speak for my own character and say, that's not true. I'll speak for Aaron Burris and say, that's insulting. And if you can find somebody on the Park Board who was trying to dupe the town council, point them out to me. I mean, that's, I, I, I think, and Steve, you and I are certainly friends and good friends, but I think that's offensive. I mean, I, to suggest that someone on the Park Board intentionally duped you or intentionally duped the council, what I regret of that is, you're absolutely right, and Marissa is exactly right. When we submitted it in early September, we should have come back and said, hold up, we need to amend that. We didn't do that, and we should have. I absolutely, one hundred percent agree with you.
Okay. Hold on, I, I, one more question to ask. Go with that. And I don't know if this is true or not, but I'm gonna ask the question. Was there a time prior to the budget being given to us, that anybody from the Park Board had a conversation with the, with the golf pro about not being retained and for him not to say anything about it?
Aaron can speak to that, but I, that's been brought up a couple of times. If we were trying to do that, we just wouldn't have told Scott until after the budget was approved. I mean, if we were, if we were trying to play hide the ball, we just wouldn't have said anything to Scott until he approved the budget, and then the next day said something to Scott. So that, that's an easy fix on that. The conversation that Aaron had with Scott, he'll have to speak. I wasn't there. I know what Aaron's told me, but I wasn't there, and he can, he can speak to that.
Okay.
One other little thing.
Sure.
And I know we've talked a lot about negative things regarding communication, but in talking with Aaron about the bond, he produced this master plan. And I was really impressed with the master plan. And I know you guys do good work. So if going forward, just to leave on a high note regarding this, if we could increase the communication between your board and our board, that would be great. There-
I'm sorry.
And I just, there's a lot of good things that happen, that come out of your board. I don't want you to feel like we're working against you. But for all of the wonderful things that happen, this is a frustrating situation.
Frustrating.
And so I know that there's a lot of great things that happen, and I hate that this is overshadowing it, but a lot of times, we don't hear about all of the wonderful things that are happening. And I would just like to increase communication across the board between the two boards.
I completely agree. I'm glad that you're the, I keep using the word liaison. I'm not sure what the-
I don't know either.
Let me make a correction, okay? So we're not throwing her under the bus, that's what, no, no, and I'm saying, so we don't throw her under the bus. I asked Marissa back in September to take the bond issue with the park. I asked Steve, Steve was already doing it, to be, take over the fire territory. Shane's working on a project. He worked on a project. She is working on the bond. She is not the liaison between this council and the park for everything. If she wants to do that, then we'll do that, okay? But I'm not gonna throw her under the bus in this meeting. I'm, I'm-
I don't feel thrown under the bus. It's okay. I appreciate the point, though.
Conversation. And you say you wanna work with us.
I'm certainly not throwing her under the bus. I love that she's involved with the park, and we've had lunch together. I love it. So I'm kinda, when I use the word liaison, it's certainly not in a negative way. I, I love it. So-
Okay, okay.
I don't think anyone up here is gonna sit there and speak bad about any employee of the town or the park, because when you look at the park, it's phenomenal. Where do people come from? They come out of town to come see that park. And it's not just because of the people sitting up here, it's the guys out there doing the work, you know? You guys do, you know, got the park looking nice. That's what you're paid to do, right? And we just gotta have an answer for all the taxpayers.
Hundred dollars to do.
Well, yeah, like us up here, we, you know. But we have to answer for the, we have to answer to the taxpayers, and that's, that's our concern. That's, that's all it is.
We applaud the good work that you do with the park. It looks great. All I hear is positive comments about the park. It's a big draw, it's a big draw. A lot of people live here. It's the benefit of the park.
That's why the Park Board's trying to do what's best for the park.
Mm-hmm.
We're not disagreeing.
No, yeah, I mean, I don't think anybody's ever gonna disagree with that. We're, we all love the park and what it is, so.
Anybody else got any comments on the council? Okay, I'm on here, I'm on here.
Can I say one more thing, just before I sit down? I'll be brief. The Park Board the other night passed our salary resolutions. And so, again, I ask you to take the position that I think you should take, is, let's clear up gray areas, let's work together, let's do a better budget. But don't take the leap that hasn't been taken before, right now, because it's setting up yet another conflict, if that's the way we go for this year, is what you said the other night, is our salary resolutions are done, and if you want to take a step today that you've not ever done before, and say, okay, now we're setting the salaries, we're gonna be in direct conflict with what we passed versus what you do. So I don't want, I don't want any more conflict.
I don't either.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, Mark.
Okay, with all that being said, can I have a motion for ordinance twenty-one thirty-one, salary ordinance for twenty-twenty-two to approve it, second reading?
I make a motion that we approve the salary ordinance for second reading.
I have a motion to approve, to have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-one. Roll call, please.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
No.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Chet Bab.
Aye.
President Bab, there are three, three readings that are required for the ordinance.
Okay.
You can suspend the rules by unanimous consent to adopt the third reading today. You could call for that motion, and if it goes unanimous, then you could vote again on a third reading yet this afternoon.
Okay. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, second, to suspend the rules. Willie, roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Shane Davis.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Chet Bab.
Aye.
Okay, with that, I'd like to have a motion for the ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-one, salary ordinance for twenty-twenty-two, third reading.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
No.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Chet Bab.
Aye.
Salary ordinance is passed four to one. Any public comments? That's good. Okay, meetings adjourned. Thank you.